Mr. Castillo.
Here.
Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
And Ms. Ward.
Here.
Thank you.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Asking unanimous consent for the adoption of the agenda. Seeing no objections. Agenda is adopted. Let's go into the work session, item two, and we will begin with the superintendent's entry plan. Dr. Nunez.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for being here this evening for this work session. We have three items on the agenda, as you've seen tonight. The first is the follow-up to the entry plan. For those of you that will recall, when I first arrived in the City of Falls Church, I had put together a ninety-day, or it was sort of a ninety-day-ish, entry plan. And within that entry plan, there were a number of activities and actions that I was going to take as I made my entrance into the school system. And as promised at the time, I said I would come back and give you an update on that and sort of how that's gone. So this evening, it's an opportunity to do this. I start the presentation tonight with my swearing-in officially here in the City of Falls Church. And then, just as a reminder of what my four pillars are around beliefs and what I intend to do while I am serving as superintendent for you. And the first is that I, my first pillar is that I promise to be innovative and always looking for new and unique ways of doing things, not resting on our laurels and never falling into a situation where I believe that the term is, we've always done it that way, and not falling into that trap. I am committed to being collaborative in my processes and making sure that everything we do, we do as a team because we are better together, being ethical and honest in my decision-making, making sure that my moral and ethical compass is always pointed north. And lastly, ensuring equity and excellence for all of the students and staff that we serve. The main objectives in the plan that I had put together were about, the first one was about establishing collaborative relationships with you, the school board. The second was understanding the strengths and growth opportunities and challenges within the City of Falls Church Public Schools. The third is establishing those relationships that I spoke so much of as I was coming in with multiple constituencies across the city to include local leaders, state officials, staff, members of the community, administrators, teachers, parents, and students. And lastly, working closely with the administrative team here in central office and in the schools to synthesize their inputs and their ideas to address sort of the most urgent priorities that we have and ultimately develop a revised and refined triennial work plan. So the way that I've put together tonight's overview is just to kind of take those four objectives and pull them apart a little bit. I don't anticipate that this would be a long work session topic, but I did want to give you some sense of some of the activities and actions to not only the board but also the community that I've engaged in to sort of make my way through them. So the first is establishing that collaborative, effective, and strong working relationship with all of you, the City of Falls Church, City School Board. And as you may remember, when I first came in, one of the actions that I took almost immediately was to have one-on-one meetings with each of you. And through those one-on-one meetings, I was able to glean sort of what your ideas, hopes, and dreams were for the school system, ways in which were best to communicate with you, sort of where your, where your, where your biggest concerns were and how we may be able to bridge the gap between some of those concerns and where your visionary leadership would take us. From there, we also had an opportunity to engage in a retreat with each other, at which point we discussed a lot of communication strategy and a process for that communication, delineated out some roles and responsibilities among and between the board and the superintendent, and discussed a governance process that we all feel like can work with respect to essentially whose work is whose, whether it's the superintendent's work or the school board's work or is it our work, and talking about some of that. We've also together developed meeting agendas and work session agendas. And primarily, that's been done through three really important ways. The first is at each of the school board meetings that you all host, there is a future topics agenda item. Oftentimes, those future topics agenda items that do come up end up in chair and vice-chair meeting with the superintendent where much of the agenda is put together. And then also in work sessions where there are things that need to come up, either in current meetings or in future work sessions. That agenda development happens there as well. Further, we've done some committee work together, whether it's, welcome to you, Mr. Ankuma. Thank you for coming this evening. Whether it's through the Chamber of Commerce and Mr. Ankuma or through, you know, our daycare group with Ms. Ward and a variety of other folks with economic development and budget and the like with Mr. Castillo and Mr. Reitinger. So lots of committee works, work that we've engaged in together has helped develop, I think, that collaborative and effective relationship that we so much value, I think, as a team. We've attended a number of community events, including just this last weekend, the big 5K run, the Fall Festival, and then many of you were also at the debate. And that is just this weekend, so if we were going to go back ninety days or so, there were even more events than that we've had an opportunity to engage in. And then, when possible, we've also engaged in some social opportunities. So on balance, I think, I believe strongly that one of the things we've been able to do very effectively is to engage each other, work collaboratively together, and are forging that strong relationship that school boards need to have between and among their superintendents. So I'm proud to say that this first, this first objective is a positive. The second is understanding the strengths, areas of growth, challenges, and opportunities within the Falls Church Public School System. Here, we, I've engaged in a number of different things. And these, by the way, are all just illustrative. They're certainly not comprehensive. But just to give you a sense of some of the things that I've engaged in to meet this objective, you know, meetings with cross-community members that have a variety of stakeholders. Attended multiple committee and city council events and had meetings with those committee and council members as well, worked very closely with the SAOs. In fact, this morning, we just had another, another meeting with the SAOs, which was a great opportunity. Communications with all of the employees at all of the different levels to hear from them, what they believe the strengths of the community are and our opportunities within the schools. Held a number of parent meetings, been to PTA meetings, met with the leadership of the PTAs, had formal and informal meetings with city leadership. That includes council members, it includes city manager and other members from city leadership, including Parks and Recreation, Chief of Police, Chief of Fire, and the like. I've also had a chance to review a number of documents that can be reviewed as well to understand what some of the strengths and areas of growth are in the city. And that includes Virginia Department of Education reports. We've looked at curriculum together, curriculum documents. We've done a number of evaluation forms that are there. Have attended back-to-school nights, looked at budgets. Although I was not at Thomas Jefferson's tonight, I'm sure it was awesome.
It was so awesome.
It was so awesome. Reviewed organization charts, reviewed audits, and looked at campus improvement plans from the past. And from those, I think that I've been able to glean, for the most part, where our strengths are as an organization. And I have some lessons learned in here that I think speak to that, what some of the challenges are that we continue to face, and what some of the opportunities are for us moving forward. And I think some of the greatest opportunities we have are certainly not only with our parent community and our student community, but also with our staff and even our facilities as well. The next is establishing relationships with and seeking input from students, teachers, parents, administrators, and other FCCPS members, members of the community, local leaders, and state officials. And here, you'll see sort of a laundry list of places that I've been and I've had a chance to, with the people I've had a chance to meet with. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, but it is illustrative of sort of the swath of people I've had a chance to engage with within my first few months here. Had a number of student meetings, student leadership meetings in the, right before the summer. Will continue to support this idea of having a superintendent's roundtable, which is an opportunity for some of our high school, middle, and elementary students to share with me what their thoughts are about the school division. Met with the leadership again of the PTA, looking at teachers and support staff. Attended all of our PEAK meetings and all of our SEEK meetings. I've met with the Ed Foundation on a number of different occasions, and on and on. And I don't want to go through each of them, but some that I'm particularly proud of are, you know, what I am particularly proud of, I suppose, of this list is that it's rather diverse in terms of type of people and the perspectives that they bring, from general government to formal, informal leaders, our teachers, our students, and the like. I did have a chance to meet Delegate Simon and to meet Senator Sasslaw. We have some time coming up within the next month for Take Your Legislator to School Day. And so we will be hosting Delegate Simon and Delegate, and Senator Sasslaw as well this fall. So again, another great opportunity to establish those relationships. And one that's missed there, I think, is the Falls Church News Press. Been able to work very closely with Nick Benton as well. And then, lastly, working closely with the administrative team. And these are the folks here at central office and also our school-based leadership to identify what they see as the priorities, provide input around those priorities, and help us work towards the completion of the triennial plan. As was presented in last week's regular meeting, you all adopted this year's triennial plan. That was a consequence of many of the meetings that we held with the leadership of the division. This also includes directors as well. And we were very successful, I think, in development of that triennial plan to take it to that next level that I think was necessary to really help drive home what our goals are and what our work is moving forward for the next three years. I think it's given us a focus and given us something to hold on to. But it wasn't, it wasn't done with ease. Certainly, I think there was a lot of sweat that went into this. I won't say blood and tears, but a lot of sweat that went into it. Started with holding retreats with the leadership team, also holding retreats with, and leadership team meaning the closest to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, John Brett, Mary Beth Connolly, the clerk, and the like. Expanding that out to all of the FCCPS administrators, having a retreat with them as well. Having a retreat that was specific to central office where we worked on this plan as well. Meeting with our CTLs, which are collaborative teacher leaders, our teachers, our parents, our local leadership to vet the triennial plan as well. And then published, I think successfully, negotiating the board process to get that through, an updated version of the triennial plan. I would like to call your attention to the picture on top where John Brett is standing there proudly in front of the entire staff of central office. That's the day his two grand, twin grandsons were born. So he is particularly proud in that picture. So some things that I feel like I've learned in my first three months on the job. The first is that we're an absolutely wonderful school system. And I'm not telling you or the community or the people that are here tonight anything that you don't already know. One of the things that is an inherent drawback to being such a great school system is that oftentimes, you feel like you have arrived. And I don't feel like that's the case here in the City of Falls Church. I feel like when I talk to teachers, when I talk to administrators, when I talk to constituents and the like, one of the things that I hear continually is, how can we get better? And that's heartening to me, to know that I'm coming to work every day in a continuous improvement organization that's committed to learning together. And I'm very excited about that. I will say, as I, as I went out to all of these constituencies that I talked about previously, one of the things that was hard to sort of glean was, what are the waypoints of excellence? What do you see as those stopping points along the way to say, we are better than we were before because of X, Y, or Z? And I, I don't know that that's necessarily a negative. I do think, though, however, it's something that we need to pay attention to because as we think about monitoring our progress towards excellence and continuously improving, I think we need to have some sort of understanding of where that next waypoint is to be able to measure ourselves. And I think sometimes, as a consequence of that, we struggle to define who we are. Insofar as, well, how would you define the City of Falls Church School? Well, I would define them as excellent. Well, how do you define excellent? Well, our kids do really well. Well, what does that mean? Sort of as you dig into that a little bit further, the, not the argument, but the conversation begins to fall apart because what excellence means means multiple things to multiple people. And I think it's really important that we spend some time thinking about what those waypoints are that we would like to meet as a division going forward. And I hope that the triennial plan has begun to sort of break down some of those barriers. Our community seeks transparency in everything we do. Again, not a big surprise to anybody here, but it was interesting to me to hear that, that there was this notion of transparency. And I've gotten to the point now, and I don't mean to suggest that I'm cynical because I'm anything but cynical, but the word transparency is beginning to take on a new meaning for me, and that is a little bit of mistrust. And so one of the things that I think I've learned in this first three months here is that we've got some work to do. And we've got some work to do to continue to build the community trust in our schools. Our kids do really well. We have a very clear organization, lucid, if you will, which is the word we've decided to use instead of transparent, which Mr. Reitinger has clearly said is not very transparent. So we'll make him walk the plank on Pirate Day. But anyway, the idea is that we have some work to do. And we are transparent, and I think that we do a lot. But there are things that we can do better to be more understandable to the broader constituency. And I think some of the places that we got caught are in the budget around being unclear or the communication that we offer is really good in one, two, three, or four ways, but maybe it takes five or six ways to get that communication out to make sure that it hits everybody. So looking forward to that, that challenge ahead. We hang our hat on being a K-12 or pre-K-12 IB school division. One of the things I heard almost to a person was the value of the IB program. And it wasn't necessarily because of the curriculum or the instruction associated with the IB program, but more around what are those attributes, those learning attributes that our kids leave our schools with that are associated with really what does 21st century look like? Are our kids able to be risk takers? Are our kids able to communicate? Are our kids able to, on and on? And so those learner profile traits were very powerful. There seems to be a perception, or, and I don't know how accurate it is, that we have limited resources, time, money, and human capital. And I think that's one of the things that I look forward to digging into with Ms. McLaughlin going forward and the team to figure out, are we limited in resources or are there some places that we can find some efficiencies that might make us less resource-strapped? I know that we have kids coming every year, and every time a kid shows up, it costs us more money to do business. So how do we, how do we find the balance between growth, efficiency, and making sure that we have the very best programs that we can afford with our kids? The next, second to last, is that with respect to decision-making, I'm not sure that there necessarily has been a really good, strong filter for how we make decisions. My observation early is that we do a lot. And trying to draw straight lines between and among those things that we do sometimes isn't easy because they may be in conflict with each other or may be creating a competition for resources that may be unnecessary because there may be some misalignment. So being able to put together, again, the triennial plan to really clarify what it is that we're trying to accomplish has been very helpful and will help us, I think, when it comes to alignment of resources down the line so that we don't end up having competing interests as much as we might want. I think in every organization, you have some, but try to get more clear around some of that. And then, lastly, we have excellent other resources in our, in our system. Whether it's, our parental resources are outstanding, our teacher resources are outstanding, our leadership resources are outstanding. But last but not least, you know, the resource of our kids. We have incredible students that walk into a classroom ready to learn every day. And that's unusual and very powerful and very exciting. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work with those students. So what does that mean for us with respect to next steps? You know, we want to begin the George Mason High School upgrade project. If the, if the community were to move forward with a bond referendum and pass that, we look forward to building a new high school. If the community doesn't, then we know that we have some work to do on infrastructure and other kinds of projects to bring that school up to code. Look forward to working collaboratively with everyone here in this room to develop our budget. It's budget season. Happy budget season. We start now, right, as we start thinking about what we're going to do next year. I think it's always budget season, right? Look forward to completing the Mount Daniel Elementary School renovation. I think that that is a big, that's going to be a huge, I don't want to say burden, but it's going to be a huge project off our plates when it's done. And to take that out of our portfolio and off the table for the next twenty-five, thirty years, I think will be really great for, for us as a city. Look forward to continuing to review how we work centrally in terms of organization, and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight, so that we can provide the best services and best structure that we can divine based on the resources that we have. Look forward to identifying, codifying, and developing best practices in teaching and learning. One of the things I've said before, and I'll say it again, is we have outstanding teachers who do really great work. So how do we leverage those strengths so that everybody gets the benefit of the best that we have that are out there? And that's through collaboration and developing those processes and writing them down and then developing around them. And I look forward to that. And then, lastly, is the implementation of our triennial plan. Making sure that we really dig in to this work over the next three years and take us to that next level. I did put up here that picture, and for those of you that may not have had a chance to hear what my analogy of the redwood trees or the story of the redwood trees are, and some of you might know it already, but the story of the redwoods is interesting. And these are some of the tallest trees in the world. They're three hundred and fifty feet tall sometimes, and they're fifteen feet in diameter. But they're, they're one of the shallowest root systems of any large tree in the world. What makes them unique is that these trees are able to survive high winds, massive storms, and the like on the coast of California. And the only reason that they're able to survive these massive storms is because their roots actually grow sideways and they become intertwined with each other so that when there is high wind, they hold each other up, essentially. And so the analogy that I was, that I used in my convocation of the redwoods is that we, as a team, sort of operate the same way that the redwoods do. Is that we have to integrate with each other and create strength among and between ourselves to help us withstand any storm that we might come across or help us remain strong in what we're doing. And I think that in the context of my entry plan and some of the work that we've been able to do, I think we're developing that root system. And we're really developing an opportunity for us to continue to build in a really strong way. So I'm really excited tonight to have had the opportunity to share with you sort of what I did in the first thirty days. Again, we've had a really great relationship, so you know all this already. But for the sake of the community, I wanted to make sure that we had that. And then, just to end with this, and that is that we are better together. And you see some really nice photos from our staff and some of the work that they're doing. And at this point, welcome any, any questions, comments, or concerns that you might have.
He was calling me.
You're likely.
I just want to say, I had read this ahead of time, and I, I agree. You know, everything you've done is just incredible, what you've accomplished in these thirty days. And I really look forward to seeing what you're going to do over the next year and the next coming years. Thank you for all your work here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Nunez, just curious. You've been in this area for a while in various places. And what would you say, compare and contrast the other schools in the region with this division? What do you note and what's, what's different? What could we learn from other divisions? What sort of things come to mind?
I think, I think the things that come to mind most rapidly and sort of, they not only happen sort of visually but emotionally too, is when you walk into our buildings, there's a remarkably different feel than you get in any other building that I've been in in surrounding jurisdictions. And it's not to suggest that where I've been is more sterile or more institutionally focused, but the feel that you get when you walk into our buildings is this real sense of, almost like, I don't want to say it out loud, but I'll say it. It's almost like you're getting a big hug when you walk in the door because there's this, there's this sense of welcomeness and wraparound of color and people and kindness and caring that is extraordinary. It has, I think it has, our buildings have a neighborhood feel. And maybe that's the better way to say it, is that it's a neighborhood feel where when you walk in, there's a sense of place, there's a sense of value, and there's a sense of understanding because you kind of know the kids who are walking the halls, and they know each other, and there's this real community that's been built there. Again, it's not to say that it doesn't happen in other places that I've been, but it is remarkably sort of true. And as a consequence of that, I think the other things that I see are, there's this reliance, almost not to a fault, but, but something I'd like to pay attention to of, well, it just sort of works, you know? It's the, it's sort of the Falls Church thing. Our schools just sort of work because this is the way we've always done things. Our kids know each other, our teachers know each other. And, and I think in many ways, that's really a powerful notion. But I also think, I'm, I'm finding when I look at the system from a macro level that it makes it a little bit hard to not manage, but to really administer effectively because there aren't systems necessarily that you might find in other school divisions. And there was an example just the other day in our meeting. We were talking about, well, who does this and who does that? And we all kind of looked at each other, and nobody exactly knew who did this or who did that because it just sort of happened, which I think is remarkable. And I don't want to come in and overlay an inappropriate systemization to the work that happens because I want to be really thoughtful and give deference to the community that I'm in. But I think there's some tweaking that can be done that actually will make us better down the line if we look at it through that, that lens. I think all of my, and this is, this is probably more than you really wanted, but one, one of the things that I think is a thread that you could pull through every answer that I would give you is that this is a, this is a true community of people. So, so with that, you get that sense of place in the school. You get that sense of, this is the way it's always been done, it's always worked. It was good enough for my kid when they were in first grade, even though they have kids now in the system, and it's got to be good enough for my grandchildren. There are, the parent community is on top of it, and they are involved, and they are active, and all of that is good. And how do we find the right places for people to engage? I think I've never seen a more active PTA in a, in a school system before. I just, you know, it's just an extraordinary place and a really great place to be. Thank you. Just a few.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Nunez. I'll just say briefly, I very much appreciate your report. I think you put your finger on in your report some of the very unique things about the community. And I think what I've seen so far of the way you handle things, which, you know, some focus on process but not overriding things, and a real focus on consensus and community building and communication fit very well with the way we're trying to do things. So it clearly, you know, it's a combination to me of the fact that our kids are, so many of them are lifers, you know, that we had kids who came through and were taught by Kathy Alaco when they were, parents were taught by Kathy Alaco, and sometimes their parents' parents were taught by Kathy Alaco. And it just, it was, it is a real family atmosphere. And so I would just say, keep up with what you're doing. I'm quite pleased with the level of communication and building collaboration that we've got. We've always had a lot of collaboration, but I think we continue to build. And you've managed to... And you've managed to, in time, it is, there have been some controversial moments in the first half of this part of your term, so, thank you very much. With that, no other questions or comments. Let's go to the second item, which is to review the superintendent's goals. Just to set the stage for this, you might remember that we approved at our last meeting the superintendent's evaluation plan, but left out of that were, so we've got the instrument that we'll use to evaluate the superintendent, but left out of that was the top set of a limited number of goals that would be built on top of, if you will, that evaluation instrument. Should be the key things that we would look for the superintendent to deliver. And so we're going to now hear from Dr. Nunez about some proposals he's got about what those goals would be. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually going to do it along with Ms. Hyde, because Ms. Hyde's been very instrumental in pulling some of this work together as well. Before I go through, before we go through this, one of the things that I want to call your attention to are the two documents that you have. The first is the, the division-wide focus on learning of why that is completed, that has the right-hand column done. Hopefully you have that one as well, and if not, it's in board docs. And then also the one that has the right-hand column empty. And the one I want you to try to as best you can sort of pay attention to is the one that has the right-hand column that's empty, so that you may jot down any thoughts, any feedback, any comments you have with respect to our, our goals that we're going to present to you tonight. Does that make sense? Okay, great. Well, let me, let me start by saying that, and I'm going to set the stage for the first one, which Ms. Hyde is going to do, which is about international backstory. Oh, am I doing that one? International backstory. But let me set the stage about these goals. One of the things that I, I am committed to is making sure that we have strong alignment among and between the school board, the central office, the schools, and our community. So when we, because I think if we're all pulling in the same direction, our chances of being successful goes up exponentially. So what you're going to see tonight in these goals are, yes, they, they are intended to be the superintendent's goals, but they are, they really are a collaborative goal that's been developed by a number of people within the central office. It's been vetted with principals, and it's been vetted with assistant principals and some teachers, and it is directly aligned to the work in the triennial plan. So you won't see anything that sort of looks different than perhaps what you've seen in the, in the strategic plan or the triennial plan. The way that we've organized these is we've tried to call attention to where in the triennial plan you would find a cross-reference, if you will, to these goals. You'll see that there are sub-goals or action steps down the left-hand side of what we're going to do to make this happen, and then some ideas of how we would see the evidence of effectiveness playing out around each of these goals. So with that in mind, let me share with you the first, the first goal. And these, by the way, again, would become the superintendent's goals, be incorporated into the superintendent's evaluation, and then you all would evaluate me based on these goals. One last thing. There are three instructional goals and one operational goal. For better or for worse, our focus in the school division really, I think, needs to be not just about operations, but really how do we, how do we focus in on teaching and learning? And so they're, they're heavy on the teaching and learning side. So the first one is, is related to priority number one, which is student-centered teaching and learning. And it's, the strategy that it addresses is one point two, which is to ensure that all students develop critical thinking and creative problem-solving skills through the IB program. The goal itself reads as follows. By June of 2020, and by the way, these are one-to-three-year goals, because it's a triennial plan, so we're, we're not going to have necessarily a goal for each year. But by June of 2020, as a consolidation of learning, each student in grades one, five, eight, 10, and 12 will utilize their developed approaches to learning skills to showcase their knowledge as measured by a student-motivated project. The, the bottom in asterisks, it shows what it would look like at each of those levels. So in first grade, a student would do the pre-exhibition, fifth grade would do an exhibition, eighth would be a community project, 10th is the personal project, and 12th is the extended essay. So as you scroll down, I'm going to ask Lisa to scroll down, you will see what are those steps that we're going to take to help us get to that place? And the first thing is, is that we need to make sure that we understand or have a broad understanding as a school division of what the approaches to learning are. So, and that's not to suggest that we don't, but how do we really get clear? And, and one of the things that I am a firm believer in is that it's really, and it comes from the work of Feffer and Sutton, and they've written a book called The Knowing and Doing Gap, and essentially it says, it's really hard for us to be successful and, and to pull in the same direction even when we know what some of the terms mean or have at least some common language, but it's virtually impossible if we're speaking a different language. So I think it's really important this year that we spend some time with all of our teachers across the division, talking about those approaches to learning, and talking about how we integrate and align those approaches to learning to the skills at each of the grade levels. So when our teachers are instructing, that they're pulling in the language that is associated with the approaches to learning. And what that would look like then, and that's on the right-hand side of the evidence, would be that you would see that in their, in their lesson planning and in their lesson design and in their units of study that they're developing as teams, you would actually see within this unit of study, our students will be utilizing this approach to learning or that approach to learning or these approach, approaches to learning. You'll also see as part of that some revised curriculum documents in our primary years program, in the NYPD unit, the middle years units, and you'll see some of that in the course syllabus for our diploma program with the approaches to learning skills identified. In addition to that, by June of 19, so in two years from now, we would use common, and this is, this, I'm, I'm sort of excited about this, because I think that we have a chance now to, in some ways, be a regional leader around the IB program. But we would develop internally age-appropriate rubrics that would provide feedback, really explicit feedback, at each of the grade levels within the following categories of research, thinking, self-management, communication, and collaboration. So at the end of first grade, as students were transitioning from Mount Daniel to Thomas Jefferson, we would be able to have assessed, and not through a formal assessment, but, but a back-ended assessment by the teacher to say, okay, we've got Peter Noonan, he's rising from first grade to second grade, how are his research skills? And be able to give me a score, if you will, in my research skills that is an age-appropriate score. How are my thinking skills? How are my time management skills? How are my communication skills and collaboration skills? Then that document or that rubric would then travel to Thomas Jefferson, and those teachers would get that and say, okay, I see where Peter's gaps are, so now we can pick up with his areas of critical thinking and self-management. And for the next four years while he's here, we're going to work on those, because at the end of fifth grade, we're going to have a new rubric that's going to be more age-appropriate for fifth graders, that I would then be assessed on. And then that would travel to the middle school, same thing, and then it would travel to high school. The, I, the, the theory of action behind this, if you will, is that by the time I graduated from high school, I will have had through my entire career in the City of Falls Church Schools, an opportunity for the teachers and myself to reflect on these approaches to learning, to identify how I get better at them. It's a formative approach, because it would take the entire length of time while a student is here in our system, and really believe that they would walk away a, a really strong, honed, set, with a honed set of skills in these approaches to learning. Then by 2019, utilizing the inquiry-based teaching and learning strategies, we want to make sure that we are incorporating and instilling creativity, curiosity, problem-solving, and self-agency in each school and/or IB program to the next. So that, that really gets at the heart of something that Ms. Ward spoke to me about early on in the process, which is IB isn't reserved for just IB kids, right? And so this is really getting into, what does it look like to be an IB system? And how do we incorporate some of these skills into every curricular area that we have? So regardless of whether or not you're an ESOL student or a special ed student, we're going to work on creativity, we're going to work on curiosity, we're going to work on problem-solving, we're going to work on self-agency, because those skills are absolutely critical for every kid that walks into our building. So when we say we truly are a K-12 or pre-K-12 IB program, we mean it. We mean that everybody in our system is going to be touched with these skills. All right? So where we see is some potential future goals that come out of this, is that we may be looking at the potential of a digital student portfolio, exhibitions for PYBP, community project, personal projects, and then even the potential development of approaches to learning skill map by grade that could be shared with all of our teachers and cross-reference to make sure that those skills are developed with students and, and are appropriate. We see those as outcomes of those rubrics that I was talking about, that we would develop at each of those, of those transition points, at the first to second, fifth to sixth, eighth to ninth, and then 12th on. So at this, at this point, I'm going to, that was a lot, and I'm going to, I'm going to pause, and I want to just give you a, a chance, if you have some ideas, some comments, or some questions that may have come up, to take advantage of the right-hand side of the, the document that's blank on the right, and jot down some questions that you might have. Because I think what we'd like to do is to go through all of these and then come back for questions, if that's agreeable with the chair. Okay. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to, to Ms. Hyde, who's going to talk about the multi-tiered systems of support.
And with the multi-tiered systems of support, you're looking again at priority one, student-centered teaching and learning. And this ties to three of our strategies. Ensure equity of access to quality core instructional programs and resources for all students. Empower our principals as collaborative instructional leaders to ensure fair and equitable student outcomes. And then lastly, to make instructional programming decisions by measuring the performance of all students, including our special populations, to ensure all students mean and exceed local, state, and federal accountability standards. And the top goal is by 2020, all schools will have a clearly defined and implemented multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. Processes including high-quality classroom instruction for all students in tier one. And tier one is the core instruction. This is what all of our students are receiving on a daily basis, and that's an area that we really want to focus on this year to, to help our teachers have additional strategies to meet the students in their classroom. And make sure we have timely identification for students who are at risk of failing or any target improvement. So when you look at these goals, there are three sub-goals, and in the areas that are focused on literacy, mathematics instruction, and then the last one would be on behavior, which we've known for the last few years as PBIS. And MTSS is more of a new term that has come out from ESA legislation and the BDOLE. So we've been doing RTI, RTI Response Intervention, and PBIS, which is the behavior component for the last five or six years. But now we're putting these together and making it one system. Again, by June of 2018, each school will collaboratively develop teacher resources, particularly in the tier one for our literacy instruction. And with tier one, that's our core, and then we have tier two, which can be approximately around 15% of our students who may need a little bit more supplemental instruction, and that's usually given by our classroom teachers. And then the tier three of the multi-tiered system of supports would be the last 5%, which need intensive support, and that's usually given by our specialists, whether it's our reading specialists, math specialists, and sometimes, sometimes our special education teachers. With that, we're looking to create systemness. We're going to create a fast facts for multi-tiered systems of support, so that, you know, the community, our teachers all have the same voice and understand the process. So we'll be creating a one-page document to explain exactly what we're doing. We'll publish our decision-making rules, and with decision-making rules, it's really determining when we make decisions about the next step for a student, what are the additional resources that are needed, the additional strategies that we need. And then we're also going to progress monitor and look at what strategies we put in place and to see if they're really working. So this requires a lot more data digging for our teachers, our administrators, and, you know, the central office. And then working in collaboratively team, collaborative learning teams to problem-solve and model, model the database decision-making. And again, we're going to do similar for all of our mathematics area, and then lastly, for the behavior for students who need, you know, some emotional support to help them be successful in, in their classroom. And, you know, we're also, in this whole process, we're looking at students, individual student data, and we bring teams together to talk about a student and, and collaborate on how we can address the needs of the individual students and then move them along the processes they need to. So we go through all three of them, because they're, they're pretty much the same activities.
So I'm looking at this and thinking this might be a lot to sort of internalize. So maybe we should do two and then do two. So maybe we could stop here and take some feedback, our questions about the first two. The first one being the IB, and the second being the multi-tiered systems of support. So, Mr. Chair, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Questions? Ms. Gill?
So I really like this first goal and the action steps. I think it's great. One thing I was thinking, though, is the success of it seems to be somewhat dependent on teacher buy-in. So whether or not each individual teacher has really bought into doing this is going to determine how robust and reliable each student's evaluation is each year. So if you have a teacher who's just not really feeling this and doesn't really want to do it, they may just check off everything, and the student doesn't get really what they need. So just thinking about how we manage that going forward and, and make sure that every teacher is really bought into doing this, that every student gets a reliable cooperation.
It's a great question, and you're absolutely right. It is reliant on, you know, sort of, any, with any data, garbage in, garbage out, right? So one of the things that I, I think we're all committed to is not developing these rubrics in isolation, that these would be done with the teachers and with the administrators. And, and typically, when people have ownership in the work, they tend to take it a little more seriously. And then there, there are ways to develop some reliability factors around that. So looking at anchor, anchor assessments, for example, you know, getting five people around the table from the first-grade team saying, okay, let's review the student's portfolio of work, let's all rate them and see where they rate, and if there, if there are reliability, if there is reliability, great. If not, let's talk about where the differences are, what the expectation is, and then begin to level-set around that. There are some great ways to do that. But you're right, and so I think the number-one way to create that sense of ownership is to let people own it, you know? And this is, this is an idea, and it's something that we'd like to work towards, but we can't do it by ourselves.
Other questions? Ms. Castillo?
What would you say is the hardest approaching, approaches to learning skill to inculcate in very high levels of students?
I think they, I think they change from, I think they're age-dependent in some ways. For example, self-management at the elementary level is, is not something that kids come well versed in, but...
And then it boomerangs again in high school.
It does boomerang. That's right. As a parent of a ninth grader, I can tell you. Yeah, that's right. But I think in the end, I don't know that I give one weight over another. I think that each of them are such discrete and independent skills that they all, they all take training. And I think some kids have strengths and some that they come to with and some don't. I just think about kids that are, you know, immediately able to work with other kids, because they've been, they've been on teams growing up, and you have some other kids who've always done independent things. So being a good collaborator might come a little bit more slowly to them, while you have a kid who is a really great researcher and likes to dig in, and another kid who would just Google it once and find Wikipedia and be done. So I think being able to work with kids around those skills takes time. So I don't, that's probably not a really good answer, Mr. Castillo, but I don't know that I would wait one over another. I think they're equally, I think they're equally challenging, because each kid has a different set of strengths.
And, and you alluded to this, how, how much professional development is going to be needed to make this happen?
Yeah. I, I think a lot of it has already happened because of our work with the IB program, but I, I do think that there's going to be some refinement that needs to happen through some of the PD, and I know Ms. Hyde's been working on a PD schedule that begins to address some of those issues as well. But it's, it's really exploring what does it look like at each of those levels. But it's really exploring what does it look like at each of those levels.
We're really trying to make sure we have a balance of, you know, giving you the professional development, but also giving you an opportunity to reflect and kind of interpret what we're talking about and reflect on our own practice and how we get with your department or your collaborative teams to discuss and work through, you know, challenges that you may face and what one teacher may be doing really well, someone else may be struggling with and really trying to create that collaboration as well.
And I guess that's one final question. I know, for example, Thomas Jefferson High School was founded in part on teaching collaboration. It drives them crazy over it. It's almost impossible to do. And it seems collaboration in general in education tends to take place outside the classroom. Are we gonna try with sports teams and activities? Is there a path forward to bring that into the classroom that you can see in terms of developing collaboration?
Well, I think problem-based units in and of themselves sort of lend themselves to collaboration. I think the units of study that have been designed within IB lend themselves to collaboration almost immediately. But I also think that there are some things that we can do necessarily inside the school, and I get your point. But the development of internships and externships and mentorships with kids, one of the things that we're looking at piloting this year is a small group of core students that would actually go out into some sort of industry for a portion of their senior year to do a deep embedded mentorship. And with that comes real-life collaboration on collaborative skills. So I think that's part of it, too. I'm encouraged by what I've seen, just in terms of pedagogy here in the City of Falls Church, in that when I walk around in the elementarys and middle in particular and look at the design of classrooms, the design of classrooms are, or the setup of classrooms really are designed around this notion of working together and collaboratively. And I think that there are tasks and products that teachers can engage students in that sort of work through that collaborative practice. And I think they are through the work of IB.
And just one last question. The term "data-oriented" or driven, I mean, how much data are we talking about here? And how much is it still art more than science? I'm kind of in the art camp.
There's a lot of art on this. I think when you start assessing skills versus content, it becomes much more complicated to quantify. So being able to say somebody is a good collaborator versus somebody's able to solve for x in this equation becomes more difficult. I will say that there's some research out there now. Some of it comes from Ken Kay's work of 21st Century Schools, where he's been able to pull educators from across the country to look at the four Cs of collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. And has been able to, in some ways, develop some rubrics that start to quantify it. But it's really more about, I know it when I see it, and this is what it looks like. So your point is well-made, that it does become somewhat of an art to be able to identify. Thanks.
Other questions?
Just a quick comment. I also am very fond of goal one. I think it's, these sorts of projects are the kinds of things that bring home why you need to learn to kids. It gives them a chance to really apply something in a very multidisciplinary way. It's the core of what IB ought to be about. And so I think it's a wonderful idea and a great goal.
All right, so we'll move on to goal three, which is specifically about special populations. And Liz Germer is here tonight, so thanks for coming, Liz, who works very closely with many of our students that would be considered part of our special populations. But I want to just provide a little context for this goal before I start talking about it. And it was probably three weeks ago, I was driving into work and I think it was US News and World Reports, or I forget where it came out. But we were getting all kinds of press on WTOP. Somebody might have heard it, saying, you know, it's one of the top school systems in Virginia. They have one of the highest rates of passage on the SOLs and on and on. In fact, we were number one in the state. And then the next day, I was driving into work, and the story changed. The story was, oh, that Falls Church, they also have a gap. And there's a gap between the students that are in poverty, that are English-language learners, and that are special education. And so sort of this highly inflated day became sort of this deflated day the next day because it was a good reminder that we serve all kids here in the City of Falls Church, and everybody deserves to be successful. And it's incumbent upon us to make sure that that happens. So what you're gonna see in this goal that relates directly to priority one is looking at how do we ensure equity of quality across the school division for all students and all programs? How do we empower our principals to take the lead in our buildings and really be collaborative leaders around this notion of equity for our students? And then how do we make instructional programming decisions by measuring the performance of our special populations to ensure that we meet our state, local, or local, state, and federal accountability measures? Now, I also want to say this as a preface. Looking at data associated with our state standards is just one data point. And I don't want us to think for a minute that that's what we hold as the most valuable. But I do think it is valuable in the context of showing where there are gaps and where there aren't gaps in a really clear, quantifiable way. And so that's why this one relates back to some of that student testing. So you'll see here that throughout this year, we're gonna do a lot of data mining. We're gonna do a lot of digging, do a lot of interviews with a lot of kids and teachers and the like. So then by 2018 in September, each student, I'm sorry, each school will create an action plan based on student data with set goals and measurable outcomes to close the achievement gap as measured by our SOL performance. And specifically, who we're talking about in that category right now are our special needs students, our students who are in poverty, and our English-language-learning students. So here you'll see the sub-goals, and there are a number of them. But the first one is each school will create an action plan based on current data to improve academic outcomes. And the evidence of effectiveness will be that there's a 10% combined increase of students with disabilities, students who are English learners, and students who live in poverty receiving pass or advanced scores on their spring 18 reading and math SOL in the third grade and of course. So we're really hitting it early. And then the next goal is that professional staff will participate in professional learning to implement research-based best practices to support closing the achievement gap for our special populations of students. And here you'll see on the next page, three very specific things that we intend to do to support the professional learning of our teachers. And the first is in 2018, June, 30% of our staff will receive sheltered instruction training. And that's training that's specifically designated for teachers of English-language learners to help develop academic English and help enhance instruction. By 2018 of June, 100% of our professional staff will participate in professional learning based on incorporating the IB philosophy through the program for students with disabilities, students who are English-language learners, and students who are living in poverty. Again, because we think that learning those skills of being able to think critically and be able to communicate and problem-solve actually enhances our capacity in those end-of-course assessments. And then by June of 19, all collaborative teaching teams will participate in professional development and learning to implement strategies focused on research-based models for effective collaboration. And that specifically speaks to our team of teachers who are one special ed, one general ed teacher who are working together on behalf of our special needs students. So that's a goal specifically around our special populations. And then the last goal is around operations. I'm not in love with this goal. I'll just say that. And I think the reason that I'm not in love with it is because I think that there's some work organizationally that needs to be done before we can get into developing a whole lot of goals from an operational perspective. But I do want to put it out there as something that I'd like to think about. And the first is that, you know, obviously, it's our intention to be the premier pre-K or K-12 IB organization, IB school division. And in order to do that, I think we need to clear the decks for our teachers to be able to do the work that needs to be done. And as an operation that works behind the scenes, I think it's our job to make sure that those decks are cleared so that our teachers can do what they do best. So by June of 2020, the goal is that operational processes and systems will be aligned to support the triennial plan with 100% fidelity, meaning that the work that we do absolutely has to be driven by what it says in our triennial plan. And that, in addition to that, we will show growth over baseline in our systems' efficiency and effectiveness measures. We don't have any efficiency and effectiveness measures currently to look at. So what you're gonna see in these action steps are things like studying the operational side of the house to identify what some of those potential measures of efficiency and effectiveness could be among all of our internally facing business operations in non-school-based areas such as budget, finance, facilities, transportation, food service, communications, community outreach, and division council. We would look to developing, to develop those baseline measures with support where appropriate, industry standards. So there are industry standards out there for facilities, for transportation, for budget, and for food service. From that, we would develop our, a set of operations and look at our operations relative to that baseline measure and then begin to prioritize what it is that we're gonna do to help us improve. You'll see the evidence of effectiveness on the right-hand side, and that is completion of that formal and informal review, develop an understanding of how the department supports the triennial plan. During budget development, all new spending would need to be aligned to that triennial plan, and then identify priorities for each department. In 2018-19, we would develop a one-to-three-year SMART goal that would be commensurate with that baseline from those measures of efficiency and effectiveness that we would have developed, and then determine a progress monitoring process. So we would then say, okay, if this is our goal, how are we gonna identify what does progress look like as we make our way towards that goal? And then begin reporting out around that progress. So the first thing we would do would be to ensure that a SMART goal is SMART. Is it strategic? Because if it's not strategic, we don't want to do it. If it's not measurable, attainable, results-oriented, or time-bound, we don't want to do it. But primarily, is it strategic? And the way that we're gonna determine whether or not it's strategic is through that alignment with the triennial plan. We would then look for what evidence looks like to show growth in each of those and then identify those strategic points that we would look at to identify whether we're making progress or not. And then in 1920, we would begin to provide some evidence, some data around whether or not we're progressing towards those goals. And we would identify a work session in the spring to bring those forward to share with you, here's how we're making progress. The reason that, I sort of gave a caveat at the beginning about not necessarily being in love with this goal is because this is a ton of work. To really go through a process and identify measures and outcomes of effectiveness and efficiency for a school system requires a lot of time and energy on behalf of the staff. And right now, I'm not sure that we're organized currently to be able to do some of this work. We don't have leadership in key positions necessarily with alignment. We have great leaders that are effective and efficient, but they may not be organized appropriately. So my thinking is that if this were something that you were excited about, and I'm not suggesting I'm not excited about it, I do like the goal. I just think it's a lot of work right now. One of the things we could do is pick one or two departments to begin this work with over the course of the next couple of years. So we might start with transportation and food service, or we might start with transportation and budget or something like that and kind of follow that through for the first couple of years and see how it goes. So we can put together a process and an algorithm, if you will, for how this work could progress going forward and ultimately end up in the next five or six years with a whole set of operational expectations that could then be utilized going forward. So just my caveat there. Any questions? Or comments?
Questions? Ms. Gill?
So again, I think the special population goal, that's great. It's here, we identified a few years ago we need to work on. But we're gonna do that. I wanted to know, what do you need in terms of resources to be able to achieve these goals?
It's a great question, and I don't know that we can answer that yet. I'd like to be able to soon because as we head into the budget, again, one of the things that I want to be able to do is align budget items to our goals. So I think you'll see those come up in the budget cycle.
Other questions?
So Dr. Nigra, with respect to the operational goal, it sounded as if there was one driver of aligning the support to the program. And then the other sounded like a, not to make value judgments, but sort of tailorism of time and motion studies where we're just gonna get efficiency. Is that both things? What's actually driving this? Is it the perception that things are not optimally staffed for efficiency or because of mission orientation? Maybe we need more people.
Well, I think we're gonna talk a little bit about that later. I do think that what I'd like to have drive this is the triennial plan. And I'm not sure that we're staffed appropriately to make sure that all of this happens to find the most efficiency that we can. So what's driving it, I think, is a little bit of both. I think it's the planning forward and then also how do we utilize our staff? And it's not to suggest that we need a ton more staff, but I do think that there are some alignments that could happen, and we're gonna talk about those next a little bit, that could potentially be the beginning of a continuously evolving organization to be able to support the work of the triennial plan and meet these goals. I don't think it's a one-stop moment. If that makes sense.
Michael, you? Ms. Ryan here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do kind of love goal four. I like goal three as well. It's really important, it's great to see that you included that. But I have to say, I love goal four since you identified, didn't so much love it. And I think it's easy to go too far in this space, but as you pointed out in your original comments around the 90-day plan, there are some efficiencies that could be found. And it's actually, I think, quite difficult in a smaller organization to do the sort of planning around efficiency and continuous improvement than it is in a larger organization where you have economies of scale and you can talk about those sorts of things. Nevertheless, it strikes me as a very valuable thing to do to look specifically at each area and to say, you know, how are we doing in this space? Because otherwise, you're in a situation, like you pointed out and also in your own comments, where you sat around a table and nobody was sure how something got done. You want to be in a position where there's a tight enough process you can actually identify how things get done and know if you've got a problem. So this seems to me to be the right approach where you, at least at the very start, say, you know, we're gonna do sort of a self-assessment the first time and figure out where we are. Not going too far in terms of trying to, you know, generate data where we're really talking about art, but by figuring out where, what sort of examination we need and what we know right now. I'd be perfectly fine if it's too far of a leap forward to try and do that in every area at the start. Who knows if this will work effectively or not? If you've been trying it in a couple of different areas at the superintendent's discretion, it sounds reasonable to me. But I think we, especially in the budget cycle we're in right now, where our populations are growing, we don't expect resources to grow as quickly as that, and we've got to build a new high school, I think it is a good idea to have a goal built around efficiency of operations, as intellectually unsatisfying as that is compared to goals around special populations, how to do interventions, and, you know, ensuring all our kids have project-based learning skills and get what they need. So, you know, it's less important than those three, but still absolutely critical. And I think it- some goal like this makes a lot of sense.
And thank you for clarity. I don't not love it. It's what it, what it represents, though, I think is a deep dive that might be really hard for us to be able to manage right away.
Hey, I just have a question on the multi-tiered systems of support, and this might go more towards Lisa. The math instruction is pretty clear. With respect to the literacy instruction, how do you envision that at all grade levels across content, or just strictly English classes?
We're looking across content, and just where students, is it, you know, really just the language, or is it content vocabulary and working to make sure that we're providing the instruction we need in those areas as well? So we have cross.
Thank you.
When they come to RTI meetings, they may be talking about, you know, reading, but they may be struggling with science or social studies. But it does that in that meeting as well.
And just my quick comments on Goal Three is definitely one that's very important to me, and I like where, where this kind of lays out the plan to have how to tackle that with the special populations. It is critically important that we, like you said with Debbie Keever, an idea here that we're talking about where we fell within this data being number one overall, but then when we did the deeper dive in that gap, and I teach you to the test, and those things, you know, aren't things that I generally support, but it does at least give that, that view of where are some areas that we are lacking and need the additional support for those students to be as successful as all the other students within our system. So I think this addresses that, and, you know, looking forward to seeing the implementation of it. And I agree with Mr. Ryan that this operational piece of looking for efficiencies, I think is going to be critically important for us to do over the next couple of years as we have some pretty big challenges with budgets and things coming up with growth, as well as a new high school that we do are a part of, as I said before, partnering with our general government colleagues to meet some of those and try to make sure that we are doing our part of having as, doing a budget as we can, but making sure that we're tackling and doing all of the goals to educate the kids that are in the system at all levels, but also when new students show up, we know we need to make sure we accommodate those students as well.
One last question that I forgot about. With respect to the special population goal, you talked about 10% combined increase. Is that longitudinal? So you're looking, so it's 10% of what for whom?
It's year-over-year by category. So, for example, in our special population, special education students, students with disabilities, if they're at 65%, up 10% from that. So it'd be, what is that, 6.5%?
But, sorry, is that?
I misunderstood.
So, no, I'm sorry, are you going to track student X in fifth grade, and then that student will see the 10% increase to sixth grade?
Oh, I see, as a cohort versus, I see.
But I think the cohort ratios are meaningless, frankly, because it's apples to oranges.
Yeah, let me go back, let us go back and kind of refine that a little bit. The reason that we're here is that this really is a draft. So let us, let us kind of put our heads together around what that evidence would look like to be more specific between now and the next time we meet before you adopt these, to make sure that we're super clear about what it is that we're saying.
And one of the things, a couple of years ago, we did have for our EL population, we did have a group of students that we looked at their particular growth year after year. We were using the WEADA scores as well as ESOLs to see how they, you know, did they fail, but now they are now, you know, just squeaking by and passing, and then the next year being, you know, strong as far as being pass proficient. So we've done that with the EL population before, but at this point, those eight kids that we were using, almost all of them have now reached a level five, which means they're no longer getting ESOL support. So this is probably a good time, if we decide to do something like that, to pick another group of students to follow year-over-year.
And if I could just add one more thing about the Goal Four, I'll be happy if there's some low-hanging or even high-hanging fruit. I would, I would suggest that you manage expectations on that, because if you look at our administrative overhead compared to similarly sized divisions, we're on the lower side of that. Some of the things are just the byproduct of being a small division, and education is unfortunately one of those fields that doesn't lend itself to automation, you know, Amazon isn't running schools, and I think there's a reason for that. So I think we need to be clear-eyed about most paradoxes, or whatever it's called, and just alive and kicking.
I appreciate you saying that. I suspect that what we're going to find is we can become more effective at what we do. But we may not become more, all that much more efficient at what we do. Or maybe the efficiencies that we find may not yield the need for people, or less people, but instead make us better at what we do so we become more effective. So I appreciate you saying that, because I think you're right. There are some things that we can do, and I want to compliment Deirdre McLaughlin for already sort of digging into some of these things. For example, going to a P-card, a purchase card process versus what we've got now, which is a much more efficient way of doing purchasing, looking at scan, potentially scanning POs that we're not hand-entering those. But that just means that the person who's here from nine o'clock in the morning until 10:30 at night actually gets to go home at five o'clock or at six o'clock in the afternoon. So I don't know that it's necessarily going to yield a lot more efficiency, but it's worth taking a look at, if nothing else. All right, so, so this is, again, a draft until it's adopted next, next regular board meeting. So I would invite you to, between now and then, if you have feedback, or some wordsmithing, or some questions that come up, if you would give that to us, we'd be delighted to take a look at it and see how we might be able to work with it. Thank you very much. And you'll want to, 2.03? It's me again. Pick this one off? Yeah. Thank you very much. I'm going to, in a minute, not yet, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McLaughlin to walk through this with you. And I want to just, first of all, say thank you again to Ms. McLaughlin deciding to come work with us for the last several months. You've put a real godsend to our organization. One of the things that I knew when she was coming in that was going to be really of value to us was, one, her experience in Fairfax County as the CFO, and also in Arlington as the CFO, and being able to take a look at sort of what is it, what do things look like from an organizational perspective here, not having been in the system and not being intimately integrated into the system. So when I asked her to work with Lisa High on what could we do with an organizational structure that would create for us opportunities to, in the end, sort of separate out operations from instruction, she was able to take a really deep dive, look at the strength of people in the, in the organization already, and to try to really make some, make some sense of it all. So, so what you've got in front of you, I'm sort of tap dancing here, I'm going to turn it over just a second.
I know, as soon as I can.
But what you have in front of you is you have a packet that says School Board Work Session Division Organization Chart. The first page is the existing organization, the way that it looks now. The second page is a potential organizational shift, and then there are two pages that speak specifically to the potential costs of this reorganization, and an opportunity for questions. So I'm going to let Deirdre take it from here, and thank you very much.
While our tech support is...
Do you want me to?
Can you log in?
You?
I could either log in as me or I can...
I do the other, though.
We'll get you. Go ahead.
You know, organizational structures in all organizations tend to evolve, and they, and I think in the world we live in, they have to evolve. Because everything is changing all the time. But what you want to do is you want to look at your organizational structure and say, is it supporting the mission of our organization? And that was the sort of the view we took when we looked at it. Now, and I, it's sort of interesting, because there's themes that we've talked about all night that flow through into this, and one is, you know, all church city schools, the organizational structure works fine. I mean, it really, it does work, but I think it could work better with some minor modifications. So as Dr. Nune mentioned, we're going to look at what we've got, what we're proposing, and some alternatives for how you might implement it. And I'm sorry, we don't...
I got you right here.
Hmm?
I got it right here.
Oh, you do, good. Okay, then we...
I can change that.
You just switch it back.
I came off.
Change the input.
Okay. All right. Let's go to the second...
And I'm not very usually tech, so that was pretty good.
You were billed as the expert. Okay, there, there we are. That is the current organizational chart, and has some unusual features that we're just going to sort of talk about briefly. You'll notice that there are business functions assigned to the superintendent. He is responsible for technology, and the assistant superintendent for curriculum is assigned a business function of personnel. Now, these things all happen for a reason. It's not, you know, it's not random that it happened. There were budget cuts made about five years ago, and the decision was made to move the personnel function into the instructional function. It's not logical, but it worked, and it was expedient and needed to be done to get through that budget at that time. The technology function, as I understand it, was moved to the superintendent at the time, about five years ago, when that superintendent was contemplating a major enhancement of technology in instruction. And with technology in the business area, there wasn't the instructional viewpoint for the one-to-one devices and so on. So it was moved to the superintendent. It doesn't really make sense, but, but that's the way, the way it worked. It made sense at the time. Another somewhat odd element of this organizational chart is that oversight of principles rests with the superintendent, and not the assistant superintendent responsible for instruction. The assistant superintendent for instruction, the role of that position is to work with school leaders, with teachers, and to enhance instruction, to ensure that there's a cohesive, coherent, and consistent application of instruction in the schools. And for evaluation purposes, that assistant superintendent is probably closest to being able to evaluate whether or not those goals were met. The structure presented here...
Oh, my God.
It's going too fast.
Sorry, I thought I saw you turn things.
Oh, these are my notes. The, what we've, what we're, now I've got to just stay with where we are. Now I'm getting onto the next one. So, this is where we are. Okay. So you would, so right now, you've got all the principles being evaluated by the superintendent, and it is moved from the instructional side. The last, and I think maybe the oddest part about this organizational chart, is that the director or the Office for Special Education, Student Services, and Early Learning does not really have a home. It, there is, we're showing a dotted line, it's sort of between the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for curriculum and innovation. I think that this is a function of the way that special education was thought of for a long time. I mean, it was thought of as something that was separate from, from the instructional core of the school division. And I think now we really do, I think everybody would agree, special ed, student services, this is instruction. It's, it's not anything separate and needs to have a clear home. So what, what we're proposing is... This is what we're proposing. This proposal doesn't change a lot, but it very clearly aligns all of the instructional functions with the instruction, and the business functions with business. And there's an efficiency in this approach, because when functions are grouped together, everyone hears the same message, they have, they get, they have consistent expectations, there's a better understanding of what the whole team is doing. You know, we talked, and we talked earlier today about being better together, and I don't think anyone doubts that's true, but it makes it a lot easier to be together if you really are together on a cohesive team. And for the superintendent, whose job it is to communicate the board's vision and to guide the organization to meet the board's goals, the task is made more manageable by having a more coherent and less complicated organizational structure. So this is something we've talked about sort of on and off through the evening, but what isn't obvious when you look at an organizational structure is to understand whether or not you have the right number of people or the right, or the people with the right skills to carry out the mission of the school division, and that's a challenge. FCCPS is a tiny, small, uh, school division in comparison to others in this region, but everything that Loudon does, everything that Fairfax does, has to be done here as well. And so what this school division has done, and as all divisions do, they've, they've kept their, their operations staff as small as possible, and to do that, people wear a lot of hats, you have some areas where you just don't have a lot of strength. And just to give you an example, this is the first school division that I've worked with that doesn't have an accountant in the finance office, which is kind of striking to somebody, you've got a $50 million business that you're running here, and you don't have an accountant. Well, what, what you do have is a city accountant that's willing to help us quite a bit. So many of the accounting functions of this organization are done by, by the city's accountant, and the assistant superintendent was doing the financial reporting, is sort of how it worked. Now, there's nothing wrong with the approach, but it's not sustainable over the long term, and it doesn't provide you or this organization with the breathing room to innovate, to become more efficient, to evaluate what you're doing. So I'm mentioning this last part because there's a couple of ways you can go with implementing the organization chart, the organization that you see here. So we have option one, and this would result in a net add of one position, and this is how you would get there. The assistant superintendent for finance and operations would be replaced by a chief operating officer. You saw that on the previous chart. This is basically a title change more than a substance change. Same would be true for the assistant, current assistant superintendent for curriculum and innovation, that would go to, that would be changed to a chief academic officer. The duties would change slightly, but, but the, it's pretty much total. There is currently a .5 clerical position that is vacant in, in the operations area. That would be eliminated. And the analysis here assumes that one of... And the, the analysis here assumes that one of the two new positions that you're seeing at the bottom of this analysis, some HR director or lead and a budget and finance lead, of those two positions, one would be hired internally. We have some, you know, we have, we have strong people here, and I think that, I think you could, you could do that. And that is how you get to the relatively low cost of, of the operation. Now, I recognize that adding an additional position and $65,000 in costs at this point in time is not a realistic, is not a realistic expectation. It's not going to happen right now. I think in an ideal world, it would, it would give you the capacity to improve and enhance your budgeting, your budget documents, to update your policies, to provide, we don't have financial training. We have a lot of people who don't know how to use the financial systems, our purchasing practices. I mean, you could do a lot, but it's not, I don't think it's, we're going to get there at the moment. So the second option is a reorganization that's relatively cost neutral. It doesn't add any positions, and it would begin similar to how option one did. You know, you trade out the assistant superintendent for chief operating officer, and you eliminate the vacant position. The main difference is this assumes that you achieve your, getting to an HR lead and a, a finance and budget lead. You would do that by hiring somebody internally and reclassifying their position. So what, what would happen is you would, you would, you would get your savings from not hiring another person and from eliminating your vacant position. So what you would have is same number of people doing somewhat, doing different things, essentially. Now, this is something that I believe can be done, but I really think it's important to understand there are genuine risks in this approach. What you would be doing is you would be hiring people from within, people who are talented, who have, have a lot of skills, but don't necessarily have strong skills in these areas. They just have a lot of, they have potential. And I think you can do that. But you're not hiring somebody who, like you would normally hire, where they come into the job, they hit the ground running, and they, they take over the HRR, the budget and These people would have a steep learning curve. I think they could all make it, and they would all be successful, but I think you would have to reconcile yourselves that there could be some missteps, there could be some hiccups. It would, it would be a challenge. I think if you do, if, if this is the route that we go, I think you really need to consider adding a position in the 19 budget. And I'm not saying that I think you necessarily need to hire and use them. I think you need placeholder of funding for it. Because this is not a long-term solution. I don't believe it is. I think with all of the things that, that this school division is trying to do now, I, 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 when we were talking about goal four, I felt like it was something that would be a real stretch for, for this organization as it's currently positioned. Now, and I think the other thing that you just can't, you know, it's, it's just a reality in school divisions. We hire people with a set of skills that we need for that one time, and people stay for years, and then they often stay for decades. And we may or may not continue to need that particular set of skills, but we have these people, and it's the nature of school divisions. We don't cut people loose and send them on their way, and if, if we think that somebody better, or somebody else would better meet the needs of the organization, it's how school divisions are run. So what this means is that when you think about this organization, you have to think about it as, as somewhat always moving. Whenever you have a, a, some turnover, you need to think, how can, how can we make this work in a, in a, in a larger picture? We've, all through this are talking about sort of the macro view of work structures. Well, I think concurrently, we've got to look at it from a micro standpoint. And I think it would be worth for each department to say, okay, I have, I have five positions, four positions, whatever it is. In a perfect world, this, this is how all the duties would align among those, those four or five people, whatever it happens to be. And then whenever you do have some change, somebody goes to a different job, they leave the organization for a, you, you start to shift, you start to shift towards that. We've got to be prepared, though, always to, to, to make the internal changes as, as change occurs. I think when I was doing this, and so the one last consideration, it occurred to me that an obvious question from you all might be, okay, why would an additional position be needed in the operations arena when all you're doing is adding one function? It's a large function. I mean, personnel is a large function. But why would you need this? And I think the short answer is it has to do with how the operations actually were managed. The, what, what is in paper for how we're organized on the operational side is not how it operates day to day. The assistant superintendent for finance and operations had a myriad of responsibilities, many of which or most of which typically done in most organizations, but you an accounting or a budget analyst. The assistant superintendent did all of the state reports, developed the budget, realigned the budget when it needed to be realigned. Did minor things like monitor the student activity fund account at preschool, or calculated the number of hours of instruction a student received each year. Just a wide, wide range of things, which is fine, except for there was no real, the, the, the position couldn't supervise all of the other functions in operations. And, and so it, the, the supervision was really just a finance staff. If you want an organization, an operational staff, and I, and I think to your point earlier, I, I don't think we're going to find savings, but boy, can we find some efficiencies that I think would free up, it just, everybody in the organization would let them slough off some of the, the paper and the approvals and all of the, you know, the sort of the craziness of business that is, is not, is not, is not modern. So I, I think, I think this, this will get you started, but you've got to think beyond just this. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Let's drink a round. I have a few. So let me ask you, first of all, is Munis outdated?
No.
It is?
No, Munis is a, it's really, I think it's a good system.
Okay.
And I, I like it. It's, it's, you know, you, most people don't need to know how to do that many things, and it's pretty easy to teach them.
That's, that's good to know. So we have it, we need, potentially with option two. So did I hear you say, or did I hear you recommend, well, not, not so many as option one? Or would you lean towards option one if you were on the spot?
Oh, I would definitely, I, I, option one is a better option. I mean, I have no, no doubt about it. I just, you know, what, what the difficulties with option one is, is, you know, you, you started your fiscal year in July one, and you sort of, it raises the issue of where were you this time last year? And so that, that's why, why option two was presented, because I think for, for this point in time, it, it is not the best option, but it's, it's, it's a reasonable one to, to move this, to move you towards option one.
So we could do a two-step up?
Yeah.
Start with two and with a, aim of moving to one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And with, with what you outlined, sounds to me that, that division or, or you would, you'd make more the commercial world, you'd do more, more in the commercial, more likely to do in the commercial world where, and I don't know if it's annually, I don't know if it's every three years or every five years, some sort of review of resources. What do we have? What have we been doing?
Absolutely.
Is it working?
Yes.
And not so let it drag for decades, you know, and then respond to a crisis?
Yes.
If you're already.
And I think, but the difficulty with this organization is, you know, its size is, you, you have high expectations for, for everything in this organization. And, and I think Dr. Noonan has just ratcheted up those expectations somewhat. And you, you, you have to, you have to have, you have to have a leadership, and then you have to have people who do the job. And there, there's, they work all together, and there's nobody that just stands out and says, you know, I, I, I need to do these things, but we don't have that leadership at the moment.
Yeah, and you get the nail on the head when you, when you say, this is, and I don't think it's, it's seen that way, but if this is a $50 million business-
Yes.
I mean, most of my colleagues have always been saying, how do you run a $50 million business with a $400,000 or $200,000 reserve? So that's always been my pet peeve.
Yes.
To your point.
Yes.
If we're going to think like a $50 million business, then, you know, I look at $64,000 and go, yes, it might be the purpose budget cycle, but we're going to quibble if 64 or 65,000 is going to make us more efficient or improve that we should strive towards getting and going in that direction and, 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 because it's a lot of money spent, but it improves the efficiency and moves us forward rather than-
I would definitely put it in as placeholder of funding with the notion that before you hired, you would, you would again look at your-
Others.
Where you are. Because if something really does change, then, and when I say change, I really mean turnover in staff, that will present opportunities that may or may not require additional staff. But probably what'll happen is you're going to, you probably will, will have to continually be looking at, and I don't think it's just in finance. I mean, I think it's everywhere.
Absolutely. Which is what I meant by that periodic review, whether you do it annually and have different departments look at how, the way we do things. Do we still do, is it efficient? Are we doing the right way? Can we change things and, and bring in some fresh ideas? But I'm glad I'm so bossed up, so, so I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. I guess the first is, well, one of the things that's always concerned me is, are we allowing the superintendent, the option one, to make the best decent, his or her scarce time? Superintendent does a lot of things that ideally we wouldn't want him to be doing. Was that at all in, in the mix of what you were looking at?
Yes. And if you go to the, to-
I mean, I know he ends up with a couple fewer boxes, which is good.
Yes, because I think that, there you go. The, the direct reports are, are, are more limited in this, in this version. I mean, they're not, but the, and because you're right, the superintendent has to be the voice and the, and the eyes and ears of the division. So you can't have that person, or you wouldn't want them, to be dealing with all of the smaller problems. Well, or something like managing the technology department. It's just, it doesn't make sense.
And then I guess, the other question is, so, so where are we now on this? Is this something that, I mean, obviously option one is important. So are you asking or are you telling? Is, are, are we going with number two here, or where, what is the state of play on this? I mean, as, to me, in my mind, it's largely up to you, aside from the vegetarian issues.
I, I came in tonight hoping to get a consensus of the board for allowing us to move forward with option two, knowing that option one was the ideal that we may work towards. One point of clarity around option one is, in option one, there was the reduction of a finance analyst that would pick up some money.
Yes.
So, so I just want to make sure that it wouldn't be $64,000. Next year would be a placeholder for a position.
It would be a placeholder for, for a position, and it would be, it would certainly be somewhat more than, than $64,000. But it would really, it, it could be, it could be more, it could be less, if, but it would be more if nothing changes. If something changes, if somebody leaves, something happens, okay, it might, you might get some offset.
So, 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 Mr. Castillo, to be more responsive to your question, my hope is that we could walk away tonight having the consensus of, consensus of the board that we can, we can move ahead with option two, which would then allow us to advertise for a chief operating officer, and again, making some moves to separate operations from instruction.
Okay, and then I guess one last question. Does, is there any PD budget for central office staff? And I, and I, I'm not, that's a, that's a, I'm not really-
There is some, there is some.
Because it seems one of the things we could do if we're a learning organization, and we have people who stay for a while, is help them stay current in what they need to be doing. And our needs check.
Yes, although, you know, that, that is somewhat easier said than done. Yeah. You're right. You're, you're right in the, you know, but in practice, it can be, you know, I'm, I'm just sort of running through my mind the people that, that I've encountered, that and some would be receptive and-
So I'd say it's a powerful course.
Yeah.
So thank you. I guess my, my initial reaction is, I'm not sure you need to ask us, because I think the organizational structure of the central office in the schools is your responsibility. You, you report to us, we give you a budget, you get to make that call. Yeah, I think if we're going to do it on option two, then, or option one, where we'd want to hire a new FTE, I, I recognize that that's clearly the best option. I think it's probably unwise to do during a time period where the amount of staff we were having in central office was a specific issue in the vegetarian cycle. But I think we ought to return to that next year. You know, now having a clearer design and say, we can make this more efficient. So I think our case would be even stronger with a new organization structure. I appreciate being asked for my advice, although I think it is your decision. And I think that, you know, for all of the reasons that have already been specified, I think more clearly separating operations and academic activities make a lot of sense. It does seem to be the norm in schools. And my, my general rule is that every direct report takes 10% of your time. So under the current structure, I think you have negative 10% time to do the rest of your job. So reducing the number of direct reports. That's just my personal opinion. I think it's your decision.
And I agree as well. It's, it's your decision. I appreciate kind of convince us to run through. Clearly, the option one is the, I think is the best option, but as we move forward, I think, I think it kind of starts us down the right path and potentially gives us-
think, I think it kind of starts us down the right path and potentially gives us the argument for the adding of positions as we move towards putting together the budget for the, the F R 19 and, and as Mr. Muffett said, put that placeholder there for, for that potential option to do that. And I do like the separation of the curriculum and the H R piece because I think those are, puts, puts folks in difficult positions when they have to talk with them in one hand, talk with them about their, their day-to-day instructional piece, but then potentially have to put the other hat on and have that other conversation with them that's never, sometimes not a fun conversation.
And then at least the right.
Exactly. So I do think that is a, a good, something to do, but I think what has been presented is, I guess something I think we've gotten the head nods from the majority of us here tonight to begin that process moving forward.
I, I appreciate the comments and I, to be honest, I presumed that it was within my purview to do it since it was an operational decision, but in my, my ever quest to be continually collaborative and honest and transparent with the community, I, I wanted to bring it here just to make sure everybody had, if you had any questions, we could answer that for you as well. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you're welcome.
Thank you. I'm saying thank you. Tricia won't let me give you a hug, but I would if she...
Any, anything else that I did order tonight before we adjourn? Thanks everyone very much.
Thanks, everyone.